The problem I see with that is that
Turn it on and let it go.
That's right.
And see what happens on it.
That's right. I think the problem is most of them end up on the fence.
Right, but for the outdoor classroom, they only cover up to fifteen grand.
Trying to think of an easier way to get it in there.
Oh wow, those when the weather swings. I'll grab.
That's true because we can, yeah, we can use.
Ask for the drive by this year.
Yeah.
In the evening?
Yeah.
I can tell my wife she can't find any trees on that side.
This is a work session. I guess I'll kind of bring things to order. And it's strictly a work session. This is for information that we're getting from Brian Bayless on their proposal for their area. And this is basically so we can conduct ourselves professionally, listen to them, ask questions when it's appropriate. And I just want to remind everybody this, in order to get through this, because we got a lot of questions, we're going to take a lot of time. This is not a public hearing. We don't need, you know, a lot of discussion going on. We want to hear information and we're also not taking any action. So we're clear on that. We're not taking action on any of this tonight. This is totally informational. We're the City Council Planning Commission on this proposal. So that will be further as you, I'm going to let Brian take over and you get to stand up front.
All right, we're running center. Oh, all right. All right, let me roll these things out. I've got three. I'm not sure exactly how to get everybody involved. So let me see. You guys want to unload that one? They're all three the same exact one, so it's okay. But one's on here. And you? You guys want one? You're good? All right, well then I'll put one right here in the middle. Okay, so all three of these are exactly the same set of documents. And we'll kind of go through them. And I'm just like.
I'm good. Okay, good.
Okay, all right.
We want to put maybe one up so people can see it. Or like, we maybe can we put them right there or sometimes we go wrong.
Yeah, but it's always like, that works out your intention?
Yeah, or just something so everybody else can see it.
Here we go. I feel like I should sit down.
No, you have to stand, Ben.
I have to still assess the thing that we're going to show us.
Do we have it on computer?
We did. I see it in the box.
That would be, that would be. We don't, we don't have anything electronic, do we, Ben?
No.
We're probably okay. Because I think we need to see it more than probably so.
Public, in a public hearing, we ought to have it there. Well, this is the group that's involved, but when a public hearing, you want to make sure we have visuals for the public.
But if you want to, or even you can put like this.
Let's start with this one. This one's not.
That exciting?
That's the most exciting slide of the whole thing.
I don't need to ask any questions about that one.
All right, all right.
Brian, you know, we have a hard stop.
Yeah, we got it. Okay. We know, we know we've got planning commission here at eight seven, so we'll get rolling. We appreciate all your time. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and kind of share with you what, what this opportunity is. From our perspective, there's a lot of history that's gone into this, so we're excited to kind of finally be to the point where we're, our, our schedule, if we had it our way, we'd be out there breaking ground this spring. So we'd be out there moving, starting the construction of our first phases in this subdivision this spring. It's been about two or three years, kind of in the making. So we're, again, we're excited to be here where we're at tonight and be here with you. My name is Brian Bayless, so I'm, I'm the land guy at Nelson Homes, the VP of Land Development. We've got Steve Anderson and Lacey Richards, he also from Nelson Homes here tonight. Here to kind of be available if there are any questions, the heavy lifting, those two have done a lot of that. So if there are questions that I can answer, they can help. Okay, let's just kind of jump right into this. Nelson Homes, and the reason why I feel like, okay.
The reason why I felt like that, that overall context exhibit is important was just kind of to point out a few things, I guess, that's happening in the area. We're a mile, as you guys well know, we're a little over a mile to the I-15 interchange. And then Nelson Homes has been building and developing in this area for a long time. A lot of homes in Far West, a lot of homes in Plain City and kind of this whole area. We're the biggest builder in Weber County and we've got two subdivisions that are currently happening right now. So the one that's to the north is called West Park. We've got sixty-two plus another sixty-two, so about a hundred and twenty units that are going in up north of JDC Ranch that's currently in Plain City. And then we've got another subdivision on the west of it called Diamond E. That's another roughly, I think it's fifty-two, maybe forty-eight, fifty-two lots, something like that. So we've, we're invested in this area. We believe in it. We know who the buyers are. We know how to build homes that they like. So we feel very strongly that, that, yeah, we're committed to this area and we're not going anywhere. In terms of, I will, I will maybe just move this one. I know the microphone's on these ones, but I'll move these really quickly. I think all the rest of you are on that, that page. So we've got two hundred and thirty-six acres. It's, it's all, as you well know, in Weber, unincorporated Weber County, the Far West property boundary is literally the, the eastern property boundary of the property is, is Far West City. So in terms of the approval process and where we're at, we have approval right now through Weber County for, I guess, three things. One, the general, a general plan revision. We have a rezone as well as a, what's the last one? Oh, the MDA, what the MDA, which is about, not thick, it's about four hundred pages. It's, again, that's been the document that probably took the most time. There's a lot of detail in that document and that was really important from our perspective to know what we were giving when we went to Weber County and also what we were getting from Weber County or any other subsequent city that annexes, annexes the property. And so that was a really important document that we felt like would be good for Weber County, but also good in the event that we ended up going to one of the, either Plain City or Far West. So that was, that was an important document, but those have been approved. So again, our objective is to try to get an application for a preliminary plat into the city by February first and we hope to be breaking ground this spring. We've been working at this for two years, about two years longer than we wanted to, as most developers would tell you, right? But that's kind of where, that's kind of where the, the status of the project is right now. In terms of, yeah, I think that's everything. So why are we here? I guess, I, it kind of feels like we're not necessarily asking to be annexed, but we definitely, that's kind of up to you. That's up to Far West City. That's up to you folks here in this room, as well as some of the, as well as some of the residents. Obviously, the residents have a say, but they've kind of elected you as, not kind of, they've elected you as their leaders. And so you guys are going to make this decision on whether this is something that, it works for Far West, it doesn't work for Far West. We're just here to share with you kind of the specifics and details and information. As the mayor pointed out, no vote tonight. We hope this decision can be made based on logic and not necessarily emotion or politics or so many of those things that usually end up getting pretty heavily involved. You guys do a lot for your city and, and so we appreciate that. And I guess we're here as a courtesy almost to be a good neighbor and to provide you the relevant information so that you guys can make a really well-informed decision and move forward on behalf of the city, your current and future constituents both. Okay, so we, yeah, that's, I think that's, that's probably everything. Let's get into the specifics. So the zoning of the property that was approved by Weber County was a myriad of different residential zones. So there's some low-density zones over here on this, on this portion of the property, over on the western portion of the property. And then there are kind of some different levels of residential zones within the community as you get closer to the larger open spaces and major transportation corridors. The, the intensity of the residential zones increases, which is typically good planning principles. It puts kind of the, the, the major, the density near the, the major arterials. We also have a C-two zone, which is a commercial zone that's down on the front edge of twenty-six hundred north and, and, and right at the S-curve. We also have the ability to expand that commercial on the other side of that major north-south road. We'll just call it JDC, JDC Avenue or JDC Road for, for that, for the, for all intents and purposes, but we have the ability to expand the commercial over here to that side if there's a sufficient amount of demand. And so that's kind of where the zoning sits right now. We have a residential overlay that the county has applied to this. And the reason why that's important, that's kind of a lot of, you know, planner lingo or whatever, but the reason why that's important is they required a development agreement. And so that's what that four-hundred-page document is that was approved. And that, again, locks down a lot of the specifics of this project. It locks a lot of the details that you see here on this plan and a lot of the other details. Well, all of the other details that we'll go through here tonight are locked in with that development agreement. One of the things that's interesting about this piece is it's not very utility-specific. So a lot of times when you're developing a piece of property, there are utilities that push it one direction or a piece of property one direction or another. But in this instance, with sewer, water, secondary water, all of those are services that are provided by districts and not necessarily one city or another. So from that perspective, that's a very unique situation, as well as obviously the unified fire and police. Those are other, other, other considerations. So I guess one of the things that is obviously clear to you and to us, but, but I didn't, I'd kind of be remiss if we didn't talk about it. It's just, you know, the residents here will utilize the roads to get to I-15. They'll go right through Far West. They'll utilize the commercial opportunities that go right into Far West. They'll utilize the schools and the churches. They'll have an impact on the Far West, the Far West culture and, and what's happening here. And so I guess our question, one of the questions that we ask all of you is, does it make sense to try to recapture the, the, the cost there by collecting some of those revenues, which we'll go through here in just a second? So in terms of the revenue projections for the city that we ran, the details of this are based on seven hundred and twenty-five units and we've got, let's see, four or five copies of this and I'm going to keep one. So we've got five copies of this, so you guys can kind of maybe pass them out, spread them around. We shared some of this information with the city staff, just to confirm the accuracy that we weren't kind of just making these numbers up. There are some assumptions that go into all numbers like this where it's so preliminary, but we definitely wanted to get this in front of you. We felt like this was a really important piece of information as you guys made this decision. So the box to the north is, or sorry, the box to the, the, the box to the north, the box on the top, I should say. I'm used to, I like maps. Yeah. So the box to the, the top of the box, the top box is for one-time impact fees that are paid as development occurs. And so you can see the different fees that are paid as you develop a, a home in Far West City. So you've got the building fee, plan check fee, you can go through each one of these. And that's a per-unit basis, the column just to the right of that, and then the column on the far right is the total, obviously totaling for all seven hundred and twenty-five units. So those are the costs. So if you just looked at this straight from an impact fee collection basis, you're looking at about seven point nine million dollars. And again, the only variable on that I would say is the building fee because that's ultimately based on the valuation of the home. And so that could vary some, but the, the other fees, unless the city changes those or revises those, that will be what it is. So it's essentially eleven thousand dollars a unit for seven point nine, almost eight million dollars. And then the other one that was, was a little harder for us to pin down entirely because we don't know what would happen on the commercial is just what those commercial building fees are, which could, we, we kind of estimated conservatively, that would be about one point two million dollar impact fees that would be collected from the commercial. And there is fifteen acres of commercial space there in, on that map. We didn't assume that the other piece, the other eight acres would, would end up commercial. So this was just the assumption on the fifteen. For some similar type commercial, we use the tax rates for other kind of properties, other commercial properties in the area to come up with that one point two million dollars. So we felt like it was a fair estimate. So that, that yields one-time fees over the course of, again, this project will probably last seven hundred and twenty-five units. It would probably last us anywhere from eight to maybe ten years, something like that. So it'll be a long time project for us. And then the annual fees that will be collected annually from the subdivision, you know, you can go down the ones over there on the left. You've got property taxes. You've got some, some sewer fees that are collected monthly, some stormwater fees that are collected monthly, BNC funds from the state. There are a lot of different sources of those funds. That totals about four hundred, almost five hundred thousand dollars annually as well. And then that, that, when you multiply that by fifteen, because that's usually the way most cities look at it, is on a fifteen-year cycle, that ends up being another seven point four million dollars. So in terms of the total fees that are collected over the next fifteen years, that, that, the estimated amount there is six point six, sixteen point six million dollars, excuse me. And that wouldn't include, you know, if there's retail sales tax that's generated from the commercial on the site, that wouldn't include other retail impacts that these residents would have on the existing retail in Far West. But those are, those are, those are kind of the facts as we saw them, again, verified through staff at a high level, as we shared that with them. They, they said that seemed to be a fair, a fairly reasonable way to approach those decisions. Well, so, well, I'm just going to keep running through this and then again, if you guys have questions, please write them down. I'd love to, I, we wanted most of the time here for you to ask questions of us and see if we could address those concerns or issues or if you have questions for your staff, obviously that would be great to run those by them, but we just wanted to get a feel for where you were coming from. In terms of annexing this piece of property, well, let me, let me take a, take a step back and say it maybe a little differently. So in terms of, a, a lot of cities get concerned about precedent, right? Like if we do this once, is that going to allow other people to come in and do something that, you know, again, if you're Far West, you're like, hey, I don't necessarily really like this or that about the subdivision. Does this open the door for other things like that for other developers? And that is definitely not the case. So this is, this is a one-off where the county has already approved this. You would be annexing it and so you would have no reason. Well, developers are going to try because that's what they do, but you would, you would have no precedent or you'd have no reason to say, yeah, because this happened once, it's going to happen again. You don't have to use the same zone. It's not even available to Far West, Far West City because this zone doesn't exist on your guys' books. So it's literally grandfathered in that big fat stack from the county and all those approvals come with it and it's not available to other developers as they come in and develop. So I felt like that was a really important fact for Far West City to certainly understand and, and keep that in your mind as you, as you make this decision on if this is something that would interest you or not, the annexation. HOAs, those are always a little touchy subject. Again, I'm flying super high level. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this and so I'd love to get into it as deeply as, as makes sense, but I just wanted to point out a few things. The next, yeah, let's, let's flip this over to the next page. That's, that's probably the right time to make that transition. So this, this property right here, or excuse me, this, this map right here shows all of the open spaces, both in the hatched colors as well as kind of the darker, the darker green solid colors. And so these are all the open spaces that are included in the community. So there's roughly forty-eight, it's right here, forty-eight point seven-four acres of open space that would be included in the, in the, in the develop, in the development. And so a lot of these, some of them are active amenities, some of them are passive amenities. And in the, the subsequent pages here, there's three or four pages that kind of go through the details of what the parks would be, what our plan has been for those parks. And so we'll get into that in just a second, but I just wanted to simply point out the fact that there are a lot of, there's a lot of open space in this, in this community. And what we would propose is that the areas that you see highlighted in red, these are all areas that the city would take. There are four distinct areas, one, two, three, four. And these are areas that the city would take and own. We would dedicate these from the property, from us, to the city and these would be owned and maintained by the city and available for residents. We, you'll, you'll see what's planned in each one of these areas as we get into the next pages. But that's, again, that's just something that's important. Everything else, though, that you see here, these would all be owned and maintained, the trails would all be owned and maintained by the HOA, including these two HOA amenities, which we.
Approximate number on the square footage of the ground that you would want the city to maintain?
I don't. I mean, I could just guesstimate really quickly. I would say it's probably right around thirty acres, but we could get you an exact number. It's the, this is, yep, this one is the power lines. This is, this is next to the ditch. It's a, or the slough. This is just an open space that we wanted for, open space to kind of buffer the existing residents that are on this side of the slough and to have a little bit more open space. And those sloughs make for great trail corridors. So we just wanted to have a little bit more open space. You can see on this one more detail of what's actually in those open spaces so that there's a significant amount of trail connectivity. And that's what those red dots you can see too out. So there's literally miles of trails just within the subdivision alone that would eventually connect up north to Far West or to Plain City and the trail system that they have through our subdivision there called West Park. And then obviously, I think regionally, that's a trail that could eventually get all the way to Salt Lake. And I think already goes all the way from Salt Lake up through Davis County. So that's going to be a really important trail network. So that is.
Strictly trails.
Those are trails.
And, but the only the ones that are indicated on a, a road are, you know, shared, shared use.
Yeah, uh, well, I guess we put anything that's a little larger than a sidewalk as a trail. So this one, while it is adjacent to a road, it would, and it would be included in the right-of-way. That one would be a trail because I think it's, I think it's six or eight feet wide. And so that's why we've identified those as kind of different than the typical sidewalks that you'd see at the side of the road.
Would this trail be constructed through the slough on stilts? You're going to have an elevated platform? No, I'm, I'm serious. If, there's a difference, considerable difference in the cost if you're putting it up on a boardwalk versus a.
Of course.
Dirk trail.
No, it's adjacent, it's adjacent to the slough.
Yeah, he's saying it's adjacent to, though. The trail they put in is not in it, but it's the side of it.
Yeah, so if I could, if I could just draw.
You're not trying to.
Yeah, no, if I could draw a quick exhibit, you know, this is the slough with the water in it, the trail would be up here on the bank outside of the slough. We wouldn't be building that on stilts. That would be very expensive. Okay, um, so again, I'm just trying to buzz through this. HOA, we've talked about the HOA. I, so I just will mention quickly, lastly, to, to before I move on, that these two HOA amenities, we have the latitude in the development agreement to do quite a bit in there of what we would kind of choose to do. If I had to guess right now, I'd be wrong on exactly what those will look like and what will be built there. We have the ability to put in water features, so pools, changing rooms, restrooms, clubhouses. We have the ability to kind of do any of those things in the development agreement. And we would make those decisions as we got closer and kind of figured out some of the details about what we wanted to do there. But those would be two open space amenities that would be owned and maintained by the, the, the HOA, the residents there in the community. Okay, so that's, again, in a nutshell, oh, and I will mention one more thing. I know HOAs get a bad rap. You guys have a few here in the city. You've got Ramuda. You've got some that are run successfully. I'm sure you've got several that are run very, very poorly. The amenities, the amenities that you put in those HOAs, how they're managed, how it's set up, the docs that establish those HOAs, those are all very important components as you look at how that's established. This is going to have seven hundred and twenty-five units. People that will live here will self-select. They'll choose to live here because of the amenities. They're not going to resent those amenities from day one. And so we've, we've, we've done, we've done a lot of HOAs that can be very successful. Most residents, especially in Weber County, they're not extremely common. It's just kind of, there's a bit of resistance there. I live in one that's very similar to the subdivision and my kids are at the pool probably three times a week. I love paying that sixty-dollar-a-month check and don't have to maintain the pool or deal with all of the issues associated with that. So it, it becomes a great thing for our family and so we've kind of patterned that, that, that type of use. And our buyer really does appreciate those types of amenities, so.
On these areas here with the parks and stuff that you're turning over to the city, that's not just for this neighborhood. It could be anybody in the city.
Correct. Yep, correct. That's correct. That's a great, yeah, that's a great question. Say that again?
Which you'd have to maintain.
Yep. So, so this is, if you flip to the next page, that will kind of start to get into the details of what those open spaces are. So if you're, if you're looking at the map here, this obviously is the big open space in the middle. So what, what we would plan and what we're planning there right now, what's been approved, so what we, what we will be building there, are four pickleball courts, a volleyball, sand volleyball court. There'd be a large playground area with a pavilion, parking lot for that. And then we'd have, we'd have a sports field as well as a potential amphitheater. And, and so those are the amenities that we would plan to put in this subdivision. These areas are highlighted in red. This is another parking lot area and potential, potential, I think it's.
Restrooms.
Yeah, restrooms. I think it's some restrooms. So essentially, what's the best way to explain this? If we end up in Far West, we would like to build these amenities. The development agreement obligates us to build these amenities if we get annexed into a city. And so these are additional amenities that we would like to put in. And if that's, again, something that Far West is interested in and wants to annex, we would be building anything that you see there in red. We're not obligated to build it in the county, but we would be if we went to a city. And these are amenities that we would like to build. These are amenities that we found successful, that residents like to have. They take, you know, advantage of and becomes a great thing for, for cities. But again, this would, like, like you just pointed out, I don't know your name. What's your name? Lyle. You know, you're good, Lyle. Those would be amenities that the city would, that would, they would take over and maintain those. So that's this open space, again, right across the street, located here on the larger map, right across the street would be an HOA amenity. And then we'd have trail, trail corridors that would be owned and maintained by the, by the HOA. And they would go east and west and some would come north and south. So with that one, again, we'll just kind of buzz through these really quickly. So the next slide talks about this, kind of the southeast open space area right here. This one would have, again, trail connectivity that would come east and west and connect up with that major trail that goes north and south. So that trail connect would come through there. We'd have some picnic shelters there as well as a playground, a fairly large playground there in that one as well. So that would be a little pocket park that would come through and connect up with that large trail that you just asked about, somebody asked about, that goes parallel with the, with the slough. And then lastly, it feels like we're missing one. Yeah, we're missing one. Nope, nope. Feels like we're missing one.
You have an entrance coming right out of this curve. Is that approved by UDOT?
So we have been coordinating with UDOT for about a year, year and a half. And the UDOT's feedback on that has been, while it's not approved because we have to get our finalized plans submitted and approved, the reason why we like that one or why UDOT and us both like that one is because that's directly in the middle of both of those radii, which kind of create unsafe at these speeds. So that would, that put it right in the middle, which is the best, kind of, the most visible access for that. We envision that eventually becoming probably just a ride-in, ride-out. They'll probably do some kind of a center-raised median in there so that people. Say that again? So we have been coordinating with UDOT for about a year, a year and a half. Um, and the UDOT's feedback on that has been, while it's not approved, because we have to get our finalized plans submitted and approved. The reason why we like that one, or why UDOT and us both like that one. Is because that's directly in the middle of both of those radii, which kind of create unsafe at these speeds. So that would, that put it right in the middle, which is the best, kind of, the most visible, um, access for that. We envision that eventually becoming probably just a ride-in, ride-out. Um, they'll probably do some kind of a center-raised median in there, so that people can't come out going, going that way with traffic coming this way as quickly as they are in the mornings. And this would become a lighted intersection. And so these residents, if they're turning left, would have to come over to this light and then make their way that way. This road, um, will, well, we'll get into the specifics of that in just a minute, but does that answer your, did that answer your question? Okay. Um, I think that we got these out of order, so if you could skip this, um, page, and then go to the next one, this is a little bit more detail again. On that open space, the power line open space corridor, that Boyd was asking about earlier. Um, so this is the power line corridor, again, this is this one that's located over here. The amenities that would be built with that, um, is a pump track. Um, and if you're not familiar with those, um, your kids will probably know what they are, just go Google them, they're pretty cool. Um, they're like BMX, like, you know, kind of jumps and berms and all kinds of fun stuff. Um, and so we've got, uh, that plan there, as well as kind of a larger dog park, that would be located there, um, with access, which. Again, is very popular, um, with a lot of residents in this, anyway. The last thing that I, I will just mention maybe in a little bit more detail, uh, two more things, I guess, is the, the garden plots that we have just south of twenty-eight hundred north. And then we would also have a second HOA amenity, uh, that would be located, yeah, right here, which is this one right here on the overall larger map. So those would be the two HOA amenities, that would be the second.
I don't remember if, would these two become pu- public city?
Yep, yep, we would, we would build those, we have the obligation in the development agreement to build all of the open space improvements that you see on these maps. So that would be our obligation to get that built, and then we would turn those over to the city. So that's how that.
You, you said that the detention area was gonna be sodded. So you're envisioning turf grass mowing regularly to maintain it?
Well, we, uh, I don't know that I said one way or the other.
It said sodded, I caught that.
Some of them are sodded and some of them are not, um.
You have no intention, you're putting a sprinkler system in, so we're just talking rough grass that grows if it grows, it doesn't if it doesn't?
Yeah, we, so we're doing that right now in another subdivision that we're doing in West Haven, a big master plan community, and we put sprinklers in. So we put the big rainbird fifty-foot spreader heads, and it, and it gets it enough to be green. And it's pasture grass, it's irrigated pasture grass, so it stays green and looks decent in the middle of the summer, when you're watering it, you know, once or twice.
Usable playing surface.
No.
So it's sound, sort of wasteful as far as water.
Uh, well, we could turn the water off to it.
Just saying, when you're, when you've got a sodded area that's not even used for recreation, one has to scratch their head.
Yeah, I, the, the, this area, are you, so which area are you talking about, are you talking about this area, this area?
That one.
Yeah, that would be a, just a, that would just be a pasture grass, native landscape. This one, this one would be irrigated and, uh, turf, turf.
Let me just ask the other question, what, what exactly do you have in mind, what, what you're calling the natural open space, what's that gonna be planted to? Pasture grass to, with irrigation?
Um, again, that's, we, we haven't committed one way or the other on the irrigation, if you're saying we don't want that cuz it's wasteful on water, then we wouldn't have to put it in.
I'm just thinking more, there's two things, there's a water conservation concern, and the other one is, how useful is that land?
Yeah, it's a good question. This one? Or this one? So this one, yeah.
If it was not annexed, what would it be?
Pasture grass, so if it remains in the county, it's, it's, um, it just remains as natural open space. And if it's annexed into the city, then it would be sodded, that's a good, good catch, Lacey, thank you. Yep, sodded and sprinkled. Those are the things that will change, depending on if we're in the county or in the city, that's right, Ken. Yep, okay, so I think that's pretty much all of the detail on the, on the open space. And then the last, um, the last slide, or the last, one of the last couple of pages, I think there's two more pages, two or three more pages. Yeah, yeah, there you go. This is the trails, this is the trails master plan, um, and so it kind of shows. Sorry, am I missing a question? I'm just pulling forward. Okay, oh, you're missing that page? You just tossed it, alright, got it, alright, so this just shows the different types of classifications of trails I think you were asking about earlier. Um, so that one obviously shows the size, and then it corresponds to class five, and so those are the different types of trails that would be built throughout the subdivision. Um, so not a lot to see.
Their surfaces either asphalt or concrete.
Either asphalt or concrete, that's correct.
Is there any stipulation annex or not as to what surface that becomes?
Uh, that's a good question, I don't think there is, I think they're all the same. Is that right, Lacey? Okay, so then the last thing that we just wanted to point out, um, is just what those kind of open spaces and amenities would look like. Um, so this is, uh, an example of an amphitheater, uh, that's just there in Bountiful, on, uh, Fourth North. Um, obviously some pickleball courts, sand volleyball courts, this is, uh, this is the, what, what the pavilion, something similar to this was what the pavilions would look like. This is those pump tracks that we were talking about, that kind of have trails throughout the subdivision, and that's another picture of the pump track on the bottom right. Um, and then just playgrounds, these are the community gardens, obviously, uh, something similar to that. Um, we felt like this was a good reflection of what those, um, the power line, uh, corridor would look like. Um, that's a great place for, for trails and open space, um, in the perpetuity that, that can never be developed. Um, so there's that one, and then the last one here is just some of our product. So one of the things that was really important for us, and I think hopefully is important to Far West City, um. Is the fact that there are, I think we have five different product types, um, of homes that we're planning on building in, um. In, uh, in JDC Ranch. So it goes all the way from townhomes, and I don't think I mentioned this earlier. In the development agreement, it limits our ability to put in more than a hundred townhomes, sorry, we can't do, we, we can do one hundred townhomes, we can't do anymore. So that's the maximum amount of townhomes that we can put in. Um, we have another product that's called an attached patio product, and it looks just like this, so this is a picture of that attached patio, it's this one. And then this one down here. So, if you're looking at the map again, it's the bottom right-hand column, and these are two patio homes, you're driving on the, on the road in front, you have two front doors. But they kind of look like one larger home, they're really well done, we're building these right now in several different subdivisions in, in Davis County, and in Weber County. Um, and so that's the attached patio, on the backside of those, they actually have two more units, so there's four units connected on those attached patios. And, uh, you have the ability to do two hundred of those, and that's essentially everything that you see here in the orange color on the map. The townhomes are in the brown. Two hundred max, yeah, we can't exceed more than two hundred of those, uh, attached patios on the, on the, in the community.
And what's the lot size on those?
Um, oh, that's a good question. Um, the units, I, I, I'd have to get back to you on the specifics of it, but the units are about ninety feet wide. And then you'd have, um, fifteen feet on both sides for a setback, so you'd have a thirty-foot setback from unit to unit. Cut that, cut that in half, it's the fifteen, so you have fifteen on both sides with ninety, so that's, uh, one-twenty, and then the depth of those is about. Um, I wanna say one-twenty, one-forty-five, I think it's one-forty-five, and then usually we have a front yard, uh, rear yard and a front yard setback. So the hundred and forty-five would be added on by probably another forty feet, so it's about a hundred eighty-five, a hundred ninety, something like that.
It's a hundred eighty-five, a hundred ninety feet.
Deep, yep, and again, and within that pad, so that's a hundred and twenty by a hundred and ninety-five, let's just say a hundred and twenty by two hundred, you have four units in there. Is, is how that works.
Is there any way to take that map? And put your lots on there so we can visualize density?
Um. We, I guess, one of the concerns that we have with that is, um, and this is, this is an important consideration in the development agreement. Is this is a ten-year subdivision. And the only thing that I can tell you is whatever we put on that map would be wrong. Um, and that's, that should be a good thing, hopefully Far West City sees the value in that of being flexible. Um, and making sure you can adjust for market conditions and certain things as they change, we can adapt. Um, so, I mean, we can, we can conceptually lay out blocks if that's helpful, I don't know exactly what it is that you're needing, but there are. You know, things that are gonna give and take, um, and that's one of the things in that development agreement that really locks in some flexibility is. As we learn things about the ground, um, there's been a lot of rain, maybe you guys have driven by JDC in the last couple of weeks. It's quite wet, and so we need to make changes, we need to have the ability to make those adjustments, and so that's some of the things that we talk about in the development agreement. So we haven't necessarily lotted this out, because anytime you made a little tweak here, you'd, you'd do that four thousand times. So, um, I guess, if there's something you need data-wise, we can help get you there with whatever you're looking for, whether it's snow plowing or. Unit counts, or.
An overall visual of what that, what your vision is, right now, of what that's gonna look like, the density.
I would say this is.
Right now, you, you have these nice blocks laid out, but I can't visualize how many townhomes are here, and how many. And how many patio homes are here, and how many single residential, and how those look on that map.
But, but you do have an example, a live three-D example in West Haven, right?
A live three-D example in West Haven. Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, we do, I was like, I'm not following you, yes, if you wanted to go. If you wanted to, yeah, full-size, that's right, if you wanted to go see a subdivision, Ken's pointing out the fact that we've done kind of, um, you know, one of these in, uh, West Haven. On our green farm, so we'd love to take anybody who's interested to go down there and see it, um, we'd love to go down there. It's, uh, I think thirty acres smaller, so it's like within. Within thirty, yeah, thirty, yeah.
I, I went out and drove it, and so you do see all the products, and how they fit together.
So it's about, so about one hundred ninety acres out there.
Yeah.
That's right.
Could I ask you a question about the site plan approval process, since you said it's evolving? Are you envisioning coming in multiple times? With the new version of the site plan, or the site plan for this addition and so forth? Or are you envisioning we make one sweeping approval at the beginning, and there are lots of changes after that?
No.
So this is an iterative process that would take place many times?
Yes. Yeah, so our hope would be, you know, we, if you just look at the infrastructure and how the development would occur, we're currently building up here right now. So this would be a natural extension of the next place for us to start building, that would be our first phase. And then obviously coming in off of, um, twenty-six hundred south at the S-curve, that would be another place that would be a logical place for us to start. And so we'd probably start in both places and work towards the middle.
So you have identified phases in this, then?
Yes.
But not necessarily the sequence of the phases?
Correct.
But we could see a map at least of the numbered phases?
Yeah, I mean, we, um, there is a map in the development agreement that kind of shows different areas. And we kind of break the community up into four or five different areas, and those would kind of technically be phasing. How, how they come together and the sequence of them coming together, to your point, isn't necessarily a hundred percent solid right now. But I would say that's probably as close as we get, and, um, it looks like this. Again, there's a lot of. Yes, we did, that's right, Ken, so they're right. It's right here.
Just out of curiosity, how many units are out at the Green Farm subdivision?
Um, I think it's around six hundred. Something like that, so this is, this is the, kind of the village plan, and tell me your name again, I know it, I just can't remember.
Lou Best.
What's that?
Lou Best, Lou, Lou will do.
So that's it, Lou, that's it right there, that's kind of the way.
Because, you know, it makes us a little nervous when you're explaining the cloud, and we like to evaluate specifics.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, I understand that, and we, we tried to commit, hopefully you can see that there's been a lot of thought that's gone into these plans. Usually at a rezone level, you, we don't get to this level of detail, but we've really spent a lot of time to kind of hone these and massage these things. And commit to the things that we did feel like are accurate, um, and we knew, we could kind of nail down with more certainty. And then we left a little bit more flexible, some of those things that we didn't know, so for example, right now, black. And white and black windows is so hot, and that wasn't hot five years ago, and so having the ability to flex and bend and give on some of those things. Is important for us to be able to, uh, be responsive to the market.
And so say you, as you develop these, you'll, you will fully develop a village with amenities before you move on to the.
That's a great question, yeah, that's a really good question, so. One of the things that we want, and I think this, the county certainly wanted, and I'm, I'm assuming Far West is going to want, is kind of a sequence of when these open spaces are built. And so, um, they are triggered, each one of these open spaces are triggered after a certain number of permits are pulled in the subdivision. And I think the way that it goes in, again, you'd have to, cuz we did massage this a little bit, um, in the development agreement, and it's been a little while. I think this one comes in after about a hundred and fifty permits are pulled. So as soon as we have built a hundred, or we have started building a hundred and fifty homes, is when we have to have this amenity built, we can't build, pull more permits until that's built.
You could be building, building in this segment up here, and then have to build a park over here.
Correct, yep.
That's in the development agreement.
That's in the development agreement, yep, so this one, this amenity, this open space amenity, I think is after four hundred and fifty permits. And then this last one over here, I think is after, like, I wanna say six hundred, I think, something like that. Um, so that's kind of how we've tied our, we've, we've made that commitment in terms of trigger, the need to trigger these open spaces as we got more and more residents, uh, in there.
As far as density, what are the triggers on that? I mean, assuming you can't just build out all the high-density villages first, or is there?
There isn't any, there isn't any restriction on that, but obviously we're not even starting on either one of those, uh, high-density areas right now. They're kind of centrally located, so hopefully that's some, um, security for the city to say, we'd have to build a ton of infrastructure to get even up into those areas. And we're not starting that right now, um, yeah, sorry, did that, did that answer your question?
Explain, explain this picture, this is.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what category does this fit into?
That's a good question.
Is this townhouses, okay?
Yeah, so I think we've got two on there, yeah, so the townhouses are right here, and right here. So those are both townhome, uh, examples of our townhomes. That we're building right now out in that subdivision Ken mentioned earlier, so if you guys, again, if you would like to go out there on a tour. I've got a twelve-passenger van, I'll clean it up real nice.
And four units per townhome?
Yeah, it goes up to six, that's great. Yep, yep.
We come back to the different, yeah, site standards and the building types?
Yeah, so what, what I, it seems like that's something that you're very interested in, and it might bore some others. Um, so what I think I would do, maybe is the best thing, is give you this, and you're welcome to kind of rip into this. This goes through, these are our design standards, this is an exhibit to the development agreement, and so it goes through and identifies a lot of. Different pieces of information that are critically important for us, it gives the city certainty on those things that we can commit to, again. Like I just got done saying, I don't mean to be a, a, a broken record, but it kind of commits to themes and con- concepts and ideas. This is a chart that kind of breaks down each one of the different development types, so all of the different residential types that we have here, and the commitments that we have, so. The minimum size lots, the setbacks, it's very similar to what a city zoning would have, so it just kind of goes through the details of all of that, front. Side yard setbacks, corners, all of that kind of stuff, uh, building heights, um. What else is there, yeah, I think those are the things, those are the things that it talks about, rear and front yard setbacks as well. So this gives kind of a little bit more explanation on what those attached patio homes look like, again, this is very small, so maybe I'll throw one over here.
Is it possible to get a digital version of all this to us? I mean, yeah, that's, all of it, so we can look at all the documentation, I understand why you didn't bring it with you, but.
Dave wants to do a little light weekend reading.
Especially the one that's that thick, that's yours, son.
So the, the one, the one, just to be clear, the one that's this thick is inclusive of all of this stuff, so it's all in one big bundle.
But this, for instance, is very useful for to spend some time looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. So it just kind of goes through, and it breaks down all the residential standards, as well as the commercial standards, so there's a lot of, um, commercial standards that we wanted to make sure we had. Certainty on, knew what was gonna be built there on the commercial, uh, we, we, anyway, so.
You have a timeline of when you would be starting development on the commercial versus the residential?
Soon as we can. But that, that commercial market is very fickle, it's kind of a.
That's the reason for the question.
Yeah, so I, I can't, I can't commit to things that I don't entirely control, and that's one where we just, we just don't know. Um, there is interest on, uh, medical office users, there's interest on, um. I would say medical office is probably the biggest one right now, um, as you get more and more residents in there, I think the, the options and variety wo- would improve. Um, but we, the last thing we wanna do is go sell a Maverick on the corner of that fifteen-acre site, and shoot ourselves in the foot, and not set it up for success. So we are gonna be very thoughtful in terms of how we sell that, we've been very successful at doing that in other subdivisions. Um, you, you don't wanna just sell the baby with the bathwater, I don't know if that's the right phrase, but something like that.
Something more or less planned out the most further down the road, on the other side of twenty-six.
Yes, yeah, Ken, so that, that one, this is back to the context map that you guys were all laughing about, nobody liked, this is IHC, uh, has a, um. Uh, let me see if it shows on here, kind of, not really, but it's just right across the street, there's an IHC facility that would be going in here. Um, it is a four acre, they own four acres right there on the other side of the road.
We know where it would be on our way to Ken's, we know where it would be, it's that big.
Yes, that's the one, that's the one, Ken, you got it.
Um, as far as like, uh, the management of the commercial, that commercial area, would that stay under the. Under your management, or who would kind of oversee those, that, that commercial aspect of it?
Yeah, we, um. Obviously, that is our front door to our subdivision, and we would be keenly, uh, concerned and aware of what's happening there. Um, my guess is, we would sell it, just like we sell those homes, and we don't control it at that point, we would sell that commercial ground to somebody. Um, but we would be very, um, cautious about who, who we sell it to, they're not part of the HOA right now. So I don't know that we would have any, other than those guidelines that you have right there, which kind of lock in some quality control measures. Uh, I don't know that we would, uh, ha- like have a management stake in it unless we partner with somebody, and again, those are questions that I just.
So you would take that whole parcel, developer B, you sell, we're selling this to you, you go with it?
Um, I. I think there's probably four or five different scenarios of how that would look, that would definitely be one. Uh, ideally, we'd probably work together and kind of figure out how to, how to bring it all together and, and make it feel cohesive, so we would kind of be the master. with the big picture vision, because oftentimes those guys are just looking out for themselves, which is their job. But they can kind of stick it to other people and we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to do that. Either to the residents that we sold to, the commercial users that we sold to, or the pieces that we have remaining. That we wouldn't want to shoot ourselves.
With this being an HOA, you folks would be responsible for maintaining your roads and plows and.
No, no, no. No, no.
Okay. Just the HOA amenities. Okay, forget me.
All the roads become city roads.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, good question.
And I just want to, I want to, if we can, ask Public Works while they're here, what would you have this and taking something like this on? Just as an idea, if that's okay, Brian?
Yeah, no, no, no. Absolutely.
Here's a mic for you.
Let him see that map too.
You want to come up here, Nate?
Sure.
This is one of those questions that keeps coming up. What about maintenance?
Yeah, that, that was my, that was my concern because.
And that detention basin has been engineered to accommodate this whole development. It looks kind of small, but.
To, I think where the quartz at's also detention, is that?
We've got, we've got detention, we've got detention here, 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 here. Yeah, there's, you, you saw how much water was out there. We've got a lot of detention bases. Yeah.
No, they're all designed to be grass sodded.
Um, well, the pasture grass, some of them are designed, some of them are.
And what the red says.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
But not the ones that.
Right, not the ones, yeah, none of the power lines. So that, that lighter shade is where that would be natural. And then over here and over here, and then the darker shade would be the actual irrigated, cut every week, fertilized, sprinkled.
What question?
So what question?
From a public works standpoint.
So for us, we've talked about this for a while now. Um, some of the utilities dump directly into Far West as it is naturally. That's, and that's the way this development is going to be. We would probably miss out on a lot of funding for our current system if we don't get the funding coming out of this.
We're taking on an impact regardless if we take on the project or not the project.
Yeah.
Well, it's on that, Robbie. Talking streets or are you talking sewer?
Sewer. Well, sewer is going to go central Weaver. So let's. Stormwater, stormwater is historically, all this water flows to us right now. Down Dixie Creek.
So it goes, so it goes north.
Darren's. Goes down to Bermuda. Goes to Bermuda, then Bermuda Court passed the new school out to Dixie Creek. So.
So the detention basin behind my house was inches from going on the top.
And that's because the water table was.
And yeah, I mean, all that water flows from Randall's property. We had sheets of fields coming off. But I mean, regardless, we're taking on the impact, stormwater wise, no matter how we look at it, it's going to get built. So I see it as we take on some impact fees and it helps us with our own system.
What percent of your stormwater is exported? Like what percent are you retaining?
The, yeah, we, we, we have to, according to the state statute, and we committed to that in the development agreement, that we can only release point one CFS, which is considered less than what that farm field releases right now. So the detentions that we have, the detention basins that we have designed up there right now accommodate all of that capacity. So there's, there's hundreds of thousands of, of cubic feet that we'll be able to supply, um, storage for, um, so that it doesn't.
So that's why I'm not, I don't know, Robbie, I don't know how big of an impact that's really going to be down.
Well, we, we already saw the impact of this last few weeks with the storms, um, like Darren was saying in his backyard, all that, most of that water was coming from this area.
But as this develops and they're retaining it on the property, right now you're receiving a hundred percent of it.
Right, right now, but.
Right now you receive a hundred percent of it. But if they start retaining it, eighty percent of it, that's a substantial reduction that you're going to be seeing.
But we may see like, everybody says, well, we saw a hundred year storm the last couple of weeks. That's happened in every four to five years now. That same kind of storm. So, so there, yeah.
Have seen a lot of.
So their ponds may be designed for the hundred year storm, but if they do overflow, who receives the impact?
Five hundred year storm that you've got to worry about.
Yeah. And, and it's, they are going to overflow.
They will.
I mean, we all know the groundwater, they ain't going to just dissipate. It will overflow. We saw every pond in North Ogden, Pleasant View, Harrisville in the last storm overflow. I had every pond in Far West overflowing. So these will overflow. We have to be prepared. And it will be, and let's say they do overflow one day, it's our residents now because that are going to be impacted. Darren's going to be impacted. I mean, it will impact us just stormwater wise.
But what about, what about snow removals and park maintenance?
So just like, yeah, so just, just like, uh, um, Brian told us before, after so many permits are pulled out, um, we'd probably do the same kind of scheduling with our staffing, with our equipment, with our everything. So I, um, based on, and it, it doesn't just in, um, include this development, but any development that is added to the city, we have a bunch of open space. We're going to do the same thing. It's going to grow. Our staff needs to grow. Our equipment needs to grow.
I guess the question is, is when you look at those numbers, I mean, you just look at that, that's a big positive, but the reality is, do those numbers even cover what we'll eventually even pay?
Um, will they ever? I mean, i- if, if we stayed the same as we are now and didn't build it at all, we probably wouldn't, we'd still need to buy new trucks and, and stuff. So we, we, we've, we're running on a lean staff as it is. We were, we're comfortable with it. We know how to do it. Um, by adding a couple of people in the next twelve years with a couple of new trucks and a couple of new lawnmowers, I mean, with this much money we can. You were going to get that information.
Yeah, you were looking at.
Do we have the numbers? Do we have it, Steve?
Miles of road?
Do we know the, the lane miles?
What's lane miles on it?
There are eight, eight mile, about eight miles. I, I actually looked up what you give agency road funds and that would come to, you would get about fifty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Class C.
Yeah.
So I guess one of the, you know, to, to kind of further your, your question, it seems like put J D C off the table, that growth is going to happen in Far West anyways, right? Isn't that safe to assume? With the open space that's going to be developed, as you look at that map, whether there's a lot of farm fields that will, that will turn.
Yeah, we're, we're growing. Our, our staff, our equipment stuff is going to grow regardless. This just makes it either speed up or.
Does it, does it help with that? Does this?
The, the money? Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, the, the impact fees and whatnot will, and the, everything will help us get the, the equipment and the, the personnel that we need for sure.
And this, this will, I mean, other than twenty-seven hundred being a state road, I mean, this will come out onto thirty-three hundred. This is North Plain City Road that will be impacted that we own also.
Everything, everything from this whole project, we are the one that's impacted the most. Not Weaver County, not Plain City, because it all comes, it's all headed east. They might go to Kent's for groceries, but it's all headed east. And so I think you have, we have to look at that and say, okay.
I'm going to raise the awareness of a, of a four minute warning.
Where, where, what's the, what schools, elementary school, would they, this go to, what, junior high?
My guess is, my guess is there will be a new elementary school that will need to be built and we would be happy to work with the school district to figure out a spot for them. And maybe even a new junior high.
Thinking about capacity.
There is a junior high being built in West Haven.
What about public safety? You mentioned unified police fire.
It would be sheriff.
Because if we have to add this to our sheriff, those property taxes don't come close to paying the extra of our sheriff bill. You know, we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, because that's true, because the sheriff will, will require more.
And then add another seven hundred homes.
Yeah, and it's gonna, it's gonna raise that bill too.
Raise the bill for anybody.
I said, well, that's true. You're right.
That, that's how I look at it is this is going to be built if we like it or we don't like it. So the way, that's, that's my only opinion and this is my personal opinion, that if you're, it's going to get built, so why not take a benefit instead of just watching, watching it happen? That's, that's my side of it.
The people that have to plow the snow, you're seeing a benefit over cost. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, there, I don't, I don't think, I think we're, we're just.
I'm a happy driver.
No, I think we're just a kind of on the, on, right in the middle. We're, we're indifferent either way. If it doesn't happen, eh, fine, but yeah, we're going, yeah.
But, but you're still being impacted by the sewer and by the drainage and everything else, by the stormwater.
Sewer, not as much.
Not the sewer, no, no.
But we still, we still will maintain them.
I didn't mean the sewer. I, I meant the stormwater. That's the good, that's going to be.
So if, if.
No, it's, yeah, right. If we didn't take it on.
Like Weaver County parks and rucks that ends up maintaining the open space?
And that's why some of the stuff in the red doesn't happen because they don't want to.
Yeah. And if, if you drive around Weaver County and look at some of their parks, you'll know why.
There's a lot of questions. You guys are going to have a lot of questions. And so we want to be here and be available. We want to answer questions that you have. You're going to have a lot of questions on the city side that you're going to have to look at and dig into. We will get you electronic copies of those documents. We would love to have you come. You know, this was kind of like, I think, as, you know, we talked to Ken, it's kind of like, hey, come and share with us what you're doing. There's a lot of misinformation out there. Twelve thousand units and twelve hundred units and apartments galore. It's like, nope, none of that is true. There's a lot of misinformation. And so hopefully this was kind of a helpful first step for the city to kind of understand what it is that they're proposing, how some of this stuff gets built, what the schedule looks like, how it all comes about. And then I think there's probably additional steps that you guys will have. We're happy to answer any questions and be a resource, um, and, and make that happen. So I, I'll, we'll follow whoever wants to call the shots, the mayor, the council, planning commission, whoever wants to call the shots. We're happy to be here and happy to answer the questions, but we're just excited to get going, anxious.
I, I want to thank you for coming and presenting this because this is actually the first time that this whole body has actually heard it straight from, you know, the source. So.
Yeah, happy to do it.
We, we have heard a lot of other kinds of things and I would rather that we all make an informative decision, whatever that might be.
And I don't, so can you tell me, I think like Plain City, okay, I'll, yeah. Never mind.
If it's for me, I'd be happy to answer it.
I don't think, I don't know. It'd probably be for the body.
So what is, what's, to wrap it up, what is the goal? Are we all going to kind of read through, come up with questions and maybe have him here again or?
We're, we're going to have follow-up, uh, conversations about this, for sure.
This is to have public hearings.
Right. I just want to know what, as the, as planning commissioner, council, what are our assignments?
So I, I cut that one.
Were you, were you saying February second is what you were kind of pushing towards or?
We're, we're hoping to get an application, a preliminary case.
Do whatever they want. They're approved.
I don't know. I'm just wondering what they, because they said February second at one point, so I'm just trying to.
We'd hope to break ground in, in April.
Boy, can I get you a grab.
I'm okay. You're fine. You're fine. I just.
Well, I promised you I would.
No, you're fine.
The wire drill thing of, uh, reassembling our.
By the way, just for, for knowledge, Liam on the county side did a lot of this documentation. So we have a source right here.
I wasn't the author of this, but I did, uh,
So there we go. Thank you.
We're just moving sideways. We're not going.
All right.
I'm sure these guys, so.
Are you sitting over here?
Yeah, I'll sit over here. The chair's over there.
You ready tonight?
Apparently.
I'd be happy to leave it wherever you want.
I think these guys probably. Okay, is this?
Well, I was just saying like, if you guys just sat kind of at that line.
One second, is we're going to move with the county?
I just heard that and I was like, I was like. It's all good. I just heard that and I was like, okay. And like, is this, this much time?
No, 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 that's a super fair question. If the other county.
No, I appreciate you guys.
Hey, Rob, getting closer. I saw, I was Facebook, uh, somebody had a friend suggesting with your wife. I saw your cute little family. He is so. He's such a cutie, right in the snow pile with you.
Darren Roylance, yeah.
That's part of it, right there. There you go.
That detention basin they have in the heart of this guy.
See you later, Rob.
I've lived there twenty-one years and that was the first time I've ever got water in my basement. So.
Really? Yeah, we have that all over Tayside. Is the pressure, the pressure on that forty-two, forty, I think this is forty-two, forty, and the elevation of the ground is about forty-two, thirty-eight. So it, it actually, it didn't crest over smooth.
Oh, wait, big boy chair. Big boy chair. There you go.
So we were actually, we were actually detention basin.
I hate to be this person.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, so the ranch had like a.
I don't want you, I don't want you to destroy this.
Yeah, so that, that.
Hey, I'm sorry. We just have to start the meeting. I'm sorry. You can go in the hall and talk. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the pledge by Lyle and the prayer by Brandon. Sorry. Sorry for the non-heads up.
I pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to get together as a city body. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to hear the important information that is said in front of us. Please bless all those that were here to attend, that they can make it home safely. Bless us that we can make good decisions and help our city continue its prosperous path. We say things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, moving on to our first item is the report from city council.
Okay, it's a good thing I brought my laptop because I know it's around here and I almost forgot it. Okay, this is from our meeting on the nineteenth, last Thursday. Uh, we have a new, actually two new city attorneys. We have an attorney and a prosecutor. So Gage Arnold will be the prosecuting attorney and Liam Keel, oh, he left. I think it's Keel, um, will be our civil attorney. Um, we received a report from the planning commission. We approved a resolution updating the consolidated fee schedule for garbage fees. We approved a rezone for Dwight Bird and Steve Bird from R one fifteen to A one. We approved a site plan for Rob Gibb with a requirement for stormwater maintenance agreement and completing a checklist for a site plan. Um, we set a public hearing for you guys at six P M on February second to amend the general plan. We have the moderate income housing. I'll have it ready tonight, the final. We've gotten feedback from the state on our changes, so I'll send out another copy for you guys to see, um, once it's done tonight. And then I guess, um, we'll be able to resubmit that. But we need to codify it. So we're having a special um, public hearing next week. And then we approved minutes and bills. We approved our dates for our twenty-twenty-three city celebrations and we reported on assignments notably, I'm sure um, Lyle will talk about this. We're moving forward on the pedestrian bridge, um, revision of the moderate income housing plan. And we submitted grants for playgrounds recently. So any questions?
Can you elaborate on those grants you guys submitted? That one, I don't have to repeat myself.
Oh, sure, sure.
What you guys have done is spectacular. Her and Kate, the mayor, has done amazing.
Well, Lyle's working hard on, on the dock too. Um, the ones we submitted through ramp, we, I did, um, well, we all worked on them. We did the Mountain View Playground Equipment. So we submitted a regular grant. That's our number one priority is for the new playground equipment at the Mountain View Park. And then we did, um, pickleball courts over by, um, is it Far West Farms?
Far West Farms.
Yeah. So the, that site we've talked about for pickleball courts. And then we did some equipment at the pump track.
Is this like mini boweries or something?
Yeah, mini boweries, I think some bike storage. Um, Katie did that one, so I just kind of overheard, but those are the three ramp ones we applied for. You're welcome. Anything else?
Janina?
Thank you, yeah.
Can I, can I amend the report?
Of course, you're the mayor, sure. I'm gonna remember this when I do something wrong, so.
No, so I'd like to introduce.
Oh, sorry, yeah, she was.
This is Liam Keo. I had to drag him back in from the other limits, so if you don't want to come up and introduce yourself. It's because these guys will probably tie their own earphones.
Yeah, I know it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to help. Liam Keo. Um, I'm full time with Weber County in their civil division attorney's office. Um, I'm assigned to Weber County Planning. They're one of my departments I work with, and that's usually where people throw tomatoes and fruit and say boo. If you don't like Weber County Planning, some people don't. Uh, I I like working wi- with um um at the county level. So, yeah, I'm excited to work here at the city um to help you all uh with on the municipal level. I think it's a, it's a good fit for, obviously with J D C Ranch as well. I'm very familiar with that agreement and all of that that's gone through Weber County Planning already. So, um, yeah, but anyways, um, I don't know if somehow my email or phone number or both will get distributed to you and you can contact me anytime you have questions and I'm happy to come to any of your meetings if you need me here. I'm pretty available. So there it is in a wrap, I guess. Any questions?
Good, okay, good, good, good to be here.
Thank you. Anything else, Ken?
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the next item is to set a public hearing for February ninth to consider the request of a rezon for John Watson located at approximately eleven hundred north, two thousand west from R one fifteen to C two commercial. Want to come up for a second, John? Tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Well, uh.
Will you pull up a subdivision?
About eighteen months ago, uh, I stood here trying to uh get this commercial, which is in the master plan, and we wanted to do a little one lot subdivision and split the house off. And so ultimately it ended up that we took it from A one to R one to split the house off. And then I just let it set while I've trucked in a thousand loads of dirt and done some work, cut trees down.
Great out there.
Uh, trying to clean it up. And so I'm back in front of the city requesting it to go to commercial.
Perfect. Any?
What do you have, John, on that? Really, the anticipation for me uh is to put some buildings down in there, uh, some commercial buildings, uh, maybe a little bit similar to what's down the road from it, where Peter Build is. Uh, create more job opportunity, create a better tax base and build something that is pretty eye appealing to uh our city as as people come into the town through that south corridor. Uh, I I I have already uh spent time with uh UDOT and uh that certainly isn't a uh exact layout. The buildings might be turned uh running east and west versus north and south. There may be uh smaller ones, there may be bigger ones, but I just tried to get uh great basic engineering just to do a little highlight of what that looks like. But the one thing that is uh fairly set in stone is that entrance. They wanted to cross from from uh Thank you. I've only gone there a thousand times in my life, but from Westwood, uh, and that coordinates for an entrance into it for access and exit. And there wouldn't be anything besides that. And uh, and that's what UDOT prefers. Originally, I asked them if, I said, we have one little exit out the north end, just maybe make it easier. And they said we'd think about it, but they thought and said, this is the very best way and and makes sense for, because of where driveways are on the south and on the north. I'd answer any other questions that you might have. Kind of an easy lift, in my opinion, because it's on the master plan. This is what they want done and uh so.
Circuitous route to get here, John. But you're in the right place.
You know, I I I kind of pushed, I I kind of pushed back a little bit and said, really? I gotta jump through that hoop? But it is the hoop that we jumped through. Uh, the mayor made made sure I understood that at some point in time. And he said, I know it's a little cumbersome, but this is how we do it. And so I I just wanted to finish some things before I came back and visited with you.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we set the public hearing for February ninth, twenty twenty three, to consider the rezon request for the property located at eleven hundred north, two thousand west from the R one fifteen to the C two commercial zone.
Motion by Steve, second by Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, February ninth, so two weeks from now. Okay, perfect. Thanks, John. Um, next item, recommend to the city council approval or denial of the Willard Bay Phase Two subdivision first amendment. Is there anyone here to represent this? Are we allowed to act on items if the person's not here? Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we have questions.
Right, unless you have questions. I just want to make sure I'm in the right first. Okay. How does the council feel? I think there are, or sorry, the commission. Are there a couple of questions? Do we need to table it?
Well, I don't, not to table it. Let me just make a comment. I, I'm amused by the landscaping plans we're getting on commercial property. There is a difference between zero scape and zero scape. And we have gone from requiring landscaping with a luxurious turf and shrubs and trees with the full aerial irrigation system to zerescape, which is minimal or no irrigation with drought tolerant plants to what they're proposing on this, which is basically throw gravel over the dirt.
Yeah.
And I think, I'll I'll mention it later, but I think we ought to revisit uh what we've got required in the municipal code for commercial landscaping. But given the location of this, I wouldn't have any problem with their proposing.
And what they're doing there too.
And what they're doing there.
Yeah.
Well, he's been in a few times.
But.
These are explosives. Well, what do you need, so what do you want?
Because of the fact that, I'd also like to add that because they have the private ponds, that they would need to go into a stormwater maintenance streamer for maintenance of those ponds.
No, one of those drawings, he had a, he had a detention basin on one of those drawings in there. I looked at it.
On the roads, on the Higley roadside, on the south end.
Yeah, both.
Back there.
Both on the south ends. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking up right, those two areas. And he had a detention or a ret- a retention wall along the canal.
Yeah.
How big is that property anyway?
Uh, good.
Three points out Lakers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not very big.
Two point one, yeah.
It's just that, it's just that little piece right up where where two thousand and Higley come together.
I looked at it today, but he's got, is it necessary for two detention basins or is that required by?
It must, he must be at a weird elevation then. Yeah, because those are deep detention.
That little piece of property?
We don't know.
To to be the city engineer is happy with those detention basins, so let's leave.
I'm just asking questions, just learning, so.
He must. Well, and now with L I D, he's gonna have to retain eighty percent anyway, so he's having to keep most of it.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Curious as all.
Um, do we feel that there's questions enough that we need to table maybe this item?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
But there's two items. We talked about the subdivision.
Yeah, we're on the subdivision piece.
Oh.
Not the site plan.
My my comment would go with the site plan.
Yeah, so maybe we we can move the site or the subdivision forward and hold back the site plan if we have questions.
It's all they're doing consolidating two existing lots.
Hmm, right.
So I recommend to the city council that we approve the Willard Bay Phase Two subdivision first amendment.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lou, second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on now to the recommendation to city council for approval or denial of the Matt Montana site plan located at thirty seven seventy and thirty seven sixty two North Higley Road.
Do we want to pull up the site plan?
You just had it up.
Is that, okay, sorry, that's.
It'll go down, yeah.
We had a bunch of them in there.
There's a lot of files in there, so.
So that's what I was at.
I, yeah. I hate, I I feel this one needs to be tabled, but I don't have a, you guys can.
The ponds are going to be deep.
Am I four? Because even just from, well, an explanation, but I guess he meets the landscape.
Well, actually, he's got a kind of a curious statement in there that I would have actually challenged. The reason for the landscape, as he said, it's uh, where it is. It's infeasible to do anything other than put gravel down. And I would like him to have explained why. I I I think I know why they put gravel down, but I'd like to have them explain why it's infeasible not to at least try a zerescape instead of a zero scape. So on that basis alone, I would like to hear their answer to that question.
Granted, there's not a lot of property there to landscape, once he's got the building and parking lot in, but still a little bit would be nice. Because it's it's gonna be, well, I don't know, from the two thousand west side of it, but Higley Road side of it will be seen.
What's, what's the feel of the commission? Do we want to table this item?
Well, given that we've, we have raised a question and that he's not present, I would suggest that we table it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Lou, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to consent items. Approval of the minutes stated January twelfth, twenty twenty three. I would just like to make a quick comment on this. So I reported to the city council last week but didn't attend the meeting. And don't take this personally, Whitney.
Kenzie.
McCa- oh, yeah, now take it personally, sorry. Yeah, now you can take it personal. So I went to pull up the minutes and I feel like we need a little bit more detail on them. Because I couldn't really get anything and I had to pull up YouTube and kind of go back and forth on it. So that's just my suggestion.
I would echo that. In fact, I would table the minutes. Um, I think anytime we have a vote where there's, it's not unanimous. And in that meeting, we devoted at least twenty minutes to discussing various concerns. And I think anybody that reads these minutes in the future would want to know why there were, the vote was three to two.
Right.
And so it doesn't have to be pages, but there were definitely some concerns expressed and discussed that I think should be reflected in the minutes. So I would move that we table the minutes until that's done.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Lou to table the minutes, second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Onto the next. Uh, report on assignment, so you can start with Steve.
I think I report.
Uh, Lyle?
I've always got some things to report. Okay, um, we had a party meeting last week and Janelle already filled in on the grants. Uh, we had, it was, it was a busy morning. We were here for two hours with these folks. The Fremont Football Youth League uh came and was talking, talking to us about uh practice and the fields and and usage and everything of the fields and and uh this various, they're gonna be using this field again here. Katie, Katie Williams put together a really good, after the experiences we had last year with Baby Animal Days and so forth, we revamped, of course, the whole parks, the whole fee structure. And so we presented, presented that to them and they went ahead and they're gonna take that back. They are adding, I think he said, didn't he say two more? Two more, two more teams around here. It's growing like gangbusters, this football league. And then also after they left, then the Beryl family came to talk to us about their Baby Animal Days. Of course, it's not called that anymore because of some. Well, they.
Real baby animal, the real baby animal days.
Actually, it's a trademark.
Adolescent Animal Days.
Baby animal extravaganza, we're gonna call it because it's trademarked. Uh, and they got some flack from the neighbors to the north uh in Cash Valley. And so anyway, they came in and presented uh two weekends, March thirtieth through April first and April sixth through the eighth. We gave them the application and we're going to review that in our next part, and he'll be there. Uh, we're having some, got a lot of questions about this. And so anyway, and then uh like I said, Janelle talked about the, the uh grants. We uh, as far as the this, I'm sorry, my brain is fried today. As far as the fishing dock goes, that's in process. We are working now on, they're still working on the one for the D W R through the Utah Door. Not the, the uh, Utah Habitat Council. They're working on that. And then I'm working with Ken and then I talked with Katie tonight. She's gonna help me with some of the technical stuff. Uh, she's got a good skill in that. And so my goal, we, if we have it turned in uh by the twenty seventh of February, they will review it. The hard stop on this grant is March twenty seventh. But if we stop, if we have it all completed and turn it in to them by the twenty seventh of February, they will review it and then give us critique back and tell us what we needed. One of the workshops I was in, they said that out of all the grants that were submitted and had a a once over by the committee, only one of those rejected. And so what we're doing is we're, we're applying for two grants for this because we're not leaving one to chance. We're hoping to get to, as a backup, so to speak. And that gives us the ability to, of course, you know, turn it down if we get what the funding that we need. And so, and then also after that uh the meeting, Katie finished up the R F P for the library property. What they're gonna do is looking, we're looking at a partnership with with uh other entities, two of them came to mind, the SWOT and of course the football league and being a partnership to uh to to clean that up, uh landscape it, put in the restrooms and things like that. And then have a, a long term agreement, so to speak, for uses of that park because people, they're SWOT and all these places are hurting for park space to to play their games on and stuff. So Katie's put an R F P out for that. And I just have to say two things. Janelle and Katie have been amazing on the Spark Committee. They're full time employee, they work full time, they're full time moms and they still find time. This year alone, we're, we've got a total of five grants that are being submitted this year. And to me, that's just incredible. And those two are just knocking it out of the park and and I just appreciate their willingness to help me on getting some of this stuff done. And and Janelle's worked her tail off to get that round and play around together. Where all the open houses and everything and feedback and residents, it's just, it's just fun to see it happen. So anyway, I'm off my soapbox. Thank you.
Lou?
Well, I've given myself a self assignment and it was prompted by this Montana proposal.
Okay.
Uh, and my concern that I have seen the landscaping on commercial property evolve to almost a universal absence of plant material. And if you read our our municipal code under landscaping for the C two zone, it says plant materials, areas of not less than ten percent of the site, as depicted on the site plan, shall be landscaped. And then they say suitable landscape may include shrub, trees, lawns, or similar landscaping material as prescribed by the planning commission. Now, if it's our desire to go strictly to rock, and I'm not expressing a view one way or the other, I think we ought to change the the description in the municipal code because based on this description, the proposal that we just reviewed tonight would not have met the requirement. So I would suggest that somewhere in our planning process, or maybe mayor, it has to start from you, I would think this ought to be revisited and rethought so that if we make a decision, zero scape is fine, let's put it in here. But if we're interested in landscape that involves plant material, which is the way it reads right now, we are sometimes not complying with that requirement, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Greg?
Nothing.
Brandon?
Nothing.
Darren?
Good.
I have a couple of things to report, actually. Uh, last Friday, I had the. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of sitting in with one of the development meetings with the mayor and the public works, and just to give you guys a heads up and keep you in the loop, the developers came in on, I don't know how to describe the piece, but the piece across, or kitty corner to Hoagies, across the street from the State Farm White Building, that, was it three acres, five acres?
Yeah.
There you go. And presented some commercial use, and it's very preliminary, but kind of developing a portion of it with a commercial, nice looking storefront building. So they're kind of doing their homework on that and going through UDOT and those pieces, and they're already zoned, so that's a heads up there. And then we actually talked a little bit about the expansion of Dominion's warehouse, storage, something across the street over here by Cottonwood. So, and that doesn't have much to do with us, but that was part of it, they'll start work over there in the summer.
They're putting a warehouse over there, too?
No, sorry, I shouldn't have used that. I don't know what they call that, substation?
Storage facility?
Yeah, sorry, I screwed that up a little bit.
I see a lot of construction going on there.
Yeah, they're just expanding their pipes.
One thing that we all need to know, so it's basically, you know how out by Higley, they were putting in pipe, and down in Harrisville, they were putting in pipe, now they're gonna be running pipe from this substation all the way down to Higley Road. So they will be tearing up 2000 West over the next several months, for at least two months, you will not be able to access in between 2000 and right here at the city hall, the turnoff. So to get here, Lou will be fine, because he lives on this side of the freeway. Anybody who lives on the other side of the freeway will have to go all the way around to get here, including staff. So, two months.
Sorry, I messed that one up, but that is what it is, so that's just keeping you in the loop there. And then thinking on this, too, has everyone turned in their education proof and stuff to the mayor or city staff or something? Because that was.
I announced mine in one of our meetings.
As long as you've done something on behalf of yourself to let the city know you've kept up on your education. So, that's all I have. Any public comment, moving on?
What do you have to do with every year?
Yes, every year, yep.
So it starts again, so I'll start now.
Starts again.
Janiva, can I, can I ask one more question before we move on to public comments? Thought came to me late, which happens more and more frequently the older I get, but the, from last meeting, you know, we had discussed the agribusiness ordinance. Has anything moved in order for us to reexamine that, since I think that's what needs to be done at this point, and if not, I'm happy to take that on?
Nothing has moved, however, I think it is common discussion, so.
Just to comment on that, we've, the property's been rezoned A 1. The question now is, what are the options of accommodating a nursery on that property? Agribusiness is one, there are some possible other things, including revisiting the A 1 description, the code, because A 1 currently includes not only residential, it includes agricultural property and undeveloped property. And so there's a possibility of rewording it so that it would include a nursery without completely revamping agribusiness, but you're right.
More than one way to skin the cat.
In other words, what are our options and which is the most reasonable?
Right. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, since we have people coming to us for the agribusiness, agribusiness purpose, or they think, right? And we're, we haven't had a successful use case yet, and so if it's time to maybe look at the needs of the city and see if there's something that we can do to, you know.
Well, I think that we definitely want, if that last concerned business wants to expand, then I think definitely there should be something done more with regards to the commercial and/or the agribusiness.
Might I recommend possibly a work session with our new city attorney?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're at a junction right now where I think most people feel comfortable about that as a possible option for the property, but we don't have a pathway to it yet.
With the background, Weber County, there's probably some of those types of uses have been here.
I would say, I think that's where we used most of our examples when we wrote it, was from some of the stuff in Weber County.
I think that'd be easier than trying to rebound the agribusiness, is look at it different, like you said, another way, skin a cap on this.
Well, I'll relay that to Ted, I don't know what he has for our work session agendas in the next couple of meetings, but I think that should be one we, we talk about here. So I'll relay that. Anything else before?
Thanks for giving us a briefing on that meeting. They take place regularly, and frequently we don't know what's happening, and it's relevant to the planning commission.
Very.
Because there's some of the early phases of things will be in front of us that we don't know about until the documents are put in our face, and so I very much appreciate the fact that you're giving us a briefing.
Yeah, it was eye opening and cool, it was good, so. Okay, any public comment?
One more, any more?
Oh, sorry, yes, I assume I'm just informing people, so February 2nd, I'm assuming at six o'clock, there's a special meeting before city council regarding the moderate income, right? Isn't that what it is?
Isn't it just a special planning commission meeting?
Sorry, Ken, you've had to come up here a lot tonight.
It's okay.
There's just a lot of notes on that one.
It's partially my fault and partially Liam's fault, because he guided us towards this juncture. So I think we all know that there's chapter eight of the, right, chapter eight of the general plan having to do with moderate income housing. Our report, when submitted, was basically, we didn't comply, along with probably seventy to eighty percent of the cities in Utah, by the way, and they gave us ninety days from notice to basically get that done and resubmitted. That is February 16th, and so I want us to be able to adopt my resolution according to what they have by the second, so that we can get it all submitted in time, so, because what we don't want to do is come up short and then not have funding, like for our roads and many other funding opportunities, by not having that be compliant, you know? So that's why we must do it, is because we, you know, as much as we don't want to pay taxes, we really don't want to, you know, raise taxes because we're not getting state funds. So that's why. So it was recommendation that this needs to come, because it is an amendment to the general plan, needs to come before the planning commission, and because it wasn't on this agenda and couldn't be on this agenda in time, it has to, we basically.
So it is actually a meeting for us.
It's a meeting for you guys to have a public hearing on it, to make a recommendation to us, and then at seven o'clock, the city council in that meeting can then take action on it. So in some ways, we're streamlining the process and hitting our goal, so.
Speaking of low income housing?
Excuse me?
Speaking of low income housing, how many low income housing homes are planned in that development we looked at during the work session?
But.
Okay, that, having to do with this public hearing, that's a different subject for another day, but we can have a conversation after the meeting if you like. So, anyway, that's about that meeting, so that's what it's for. Please be here.
And it is at six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock will be you guys' meeting, our meeting will be at seven.
Thank you.
And Liam won't be here.
So we can do what we want if Liam's not here, right?
Liam's gonna have our resolution ready for us to approve, as long as we have all the ducks on.
Okay. Okay, now, public comment? And the last item, adjournment.
Why move that we adjourn?
I second.
Motion by Lyle, second by Brandon, and I'll say aye if you agree.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're done. Thank you, guys.
I didn't hear the gavel that was needed.
No, I don't, thanks, Lou. You can be in charge. That seemed to give you joy.
I just wanted to see a quiet version of it. Let.